... seventeen. We're going to go round three. We have Maile Brongo. So we'll give you guys some time to introduce yourselves, do whatever you'd like to do, and then we'll ask you some questions when we're all done.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Falco Mascanti. I'm a partner at Maile Brongo Maile. It's easy to say if you just think of May, Lo. Don't have to say all the vowels that are in there. With me tonight is Pete Halsey. He's one of our associates in our school law division. We also had an associate, or senior associate Christina Lane, who was going to join us this evening. Unfortunately, she has some teenage children, and when she woke up this morning, one of them had flu-like symptoms.
Oh, no.
So erring on the side of caution, we told her, stay away.
Smart flag.
We appreciate that. You can go outside and just speak from outside.
There you go. I did shake your hand.
She wasn't in the office today. We haven't seen her, so we're quarantining her.
Maile Brongo Maile has been around for probably pushing forty years, and I would venture to say that in those forty years, we have always represented school districts as part of our practice. Our firm is rather diversified. We have fifteen full-time attorneys, and we're separated into different types of practice areas, but we have a very vibrant school law practice and municipal practice. So we represent not just school districts, but also municipalities, sewage, water authorities, you know, the whole variety of public entities. Some of our clients, our school clients, have been with our firm almost since its inception. In fact, the senior partner in the firm who's been practicing for close to fifty years now has pretty much represented North Allegheny School District for that entire period of his practice. And I think that says a lot about the firm and of our approach to how we interact with our school clients and our municipal clients, because obviously, over that period of time, the board has changed. New members have come on, old have left. But our firm has remained solicitor for a very important reason, and that is because when we give our advice to our clients, we give it based on the law, not based on which way the political winds may be moving, counting votes or anything like that. We want you to have and be equipped with the best possible legal advice that you can have, so that you can make your decisions based on what the law and what the options are that the law provides for you to do. I know you have a lot of material in front of you from our firm. A couple of things I just want to highlight before we start taking questions. If you go to page five in our philosophy, just a couple of the points that we make there, which we feel kind of distinguishes our firm from some of the others that you have interviewed and are going to interview tonight. The first one on that page is a team approach. Our position is that you should always have, excuse me, access to an attorney who's familiar with the issues that you're facing. So for Beaver Area School District, I will be the primary contact or the partner assigned to the case. You'll also have Pete Halasy, who you can contact and who will be familiar with the issues that the district is facing. And then Christina Lane, again, unfortunately not here this evening, but she will also be an active member of the team that will be servicing the school district. So, for example, if I'm out of the office because I'm in a grievance arbitration or collective bargaining negotiations, and you call in about an issue that needs to be addressed, Pete will be able to address that immediately. He and I will be communicating. We'll both know what the issues are, and he can give you an immediate response rather than having to wait for me to get back to the office. The other advantage of that is that when we have, when we come to your board meetings, the attorney at the meeting will be able to address the issue and won't have to wait to go back to the office to find out from the other attorney what's going on on that matter. So the attorney that's here at the table with you will be able to respond immediately to the issues as they come up and will be familiar with those. Now, that's the advantage of the team approach. The second point is our comprehensive knowledge as a firm that has, again, been representing school districts for forty to fifty years. You can only imagine the database that we've developed with memos and research on the different issues that each of the school district faces. So if an issue that, and of course, I think you all know, we represent Central Valley School District, an issue that happens in Central Valley very likely is going to be an issue that you're going to be dealing with as well. So if we've looked into it for Central Valley, you have the benefit of us already having reviewed it and being able, again, to immediately respond in, I would say, a very cost-efficient manner, because we wouldn't have to pass on all that research looking into the issue. We'll be able to just provide you with that response. I'm just kind of, I'm sorry, I paused because I was just looking to make sure I hit some of the other points. The other good thing about our firm is the breadth of experience that our attorneys have. So not only do we have attorneys that have been dealing with school issues for decades, but we also have attorneys, one, for example, Dave Rayes, who is a registered architect and has, before he became an attorney, and has continued that certification as an architect. So when we have a dispute over a construction matter, Dave knows exactly what to look for in the drawings, in the contracts, you know, to make sure that, again, you're getting the best benefit from that experience. We also have attorneys that deal specifically with assessment matters. When I came, when I approached your district, I crossed over the bridge and saw the cracker plant there that Shell has built. We, as solicitors for Central Valley, were very much involved in the assessment issues, dealing with that plan, which you can imagine how complicated those were, and were able to work with the various parties to get a good arrangement that benefits now the communities as well as the school district. But we have attorneys that are dedicated to assessment matters and can deal with those issues, and they do deal with them on a day-in, day-out basis. We also have attorneys at our office that focus on special education matters. Christina Lane, Mike Brongo, deal with special education matters, due process hearings, working with school districts if there's a complicated IEP coming out and sitting as part of that IEP team. And also, sometimes more importantly, doing audits of the special education files to make sure that things are being properly documented in the file, so that it would position the district well in case a due process claim does come up. So they have a very great breadth of experience dealing with special education. We also have attorneys that deal quite extensively with collective bargaining, with grievance arbitrations. I would venture to say that, you know, I don't really list him as a reference, but if you talk to Nick Perry over at Central Valley, our track record in handling grievance arbitrations for that district is amazing in terms of the number of wins that we've had going into arbitration. What I always tell clients is, if you have a good, strong, solid case that turns out to be a grievance, there's no reason for you to be fearful in going to arbitration and think that you're going to lose, because labor arbitrators tend to rule most more with the labor unions as opposed to with management. If you approach it, number one, first by negotiating good, strong language in your collective bargaining agreements to position yourself well going into arbitration. If you, as we do, have a database of the arbitrators, so that when we make the strikes from a panelist, we kind of know which way the different arbitrators would lean going into arbitration. And then if you prepare the case well with the witnesses, take the time to come out and meet with them and go over the documents and talk to the witnesses, it will give you as much of a chance of success in arbitration as it will with the union. Last couple of points before we take questions, and I don't mean to cut Pete out on there. He's sitting here kind of quiet. I am the partner.
Sometimes it's such that you're better seen than not heard.
He was nodding when you...
He was nodding, okay. He definitely... The next point is the responsiveness. And again, I would venture to say that this does set us apart from a lot of the other firms. Our culture at the office is to respond to clients within twenty-four hours. So if your superintendent, your business manager, board president are going to call our office, if you don't immediately get through to us, which I would venture to say is most of the time, you will get a response back from us within twenty-four hours. An example, of course, what's going on now with the coronavirus. You don't want to be sitting out here at the district not knowing what to do or how to handle that type of situation without being able to have that immediate access and response. If you're emailing us as a means of communication, I know I sit in my office sometimes and can't get away from the email, because it just goes back and forth and back and forth. But again, you're going to get a very quick response. If you text, I think we, I'm not a texter, but those of us who do text will respond in that fashion. You know, I know that both of us take phone calls and communicate with our clients after hours as well. So you're definitely, again, going to get a response, if not immediately, then within that first twenty-four hours. And if it has to go beyond that, you're going to still get a response in that twenty-four hours and let you know when we will be able to get back to you. And lastly, is our proactive approach. Some of the material that we have with our proposal is some of the email blasts that we send out to our clients. You know, we keep ahead of things. When transgender issues first started to come to bear, you know, we were ahead of that curve in terms of developing policies for our clients. With coronavirus that's happening right now, and Pete has been authoring and sending out guidance to our districts almost daily, you know, because it keeps evolving on a daily basis. So some of those are examples that we've submitted. And then also, we send out an education law newsletter that goes not only to our clients, but to close to a thousand people in the Western Pennsylvania area at school districts we don't even represent. We view it as a service to the education community to provide those newsletters on key issues that districts are facing. We also do in-service trainings for staff. We presented on social media, on sexual harassment at the PSBA conference in Hershey for several years. We also have a reputation with the local government academy and with the Allegheny League of Municipalities in making presentations for their conferences as well. So I think, you know, generally, that gives you a flavor for the firm. There's a lot of material in our proposal that goes through each area that impacts school districts, you know, and our experience in each of those areas. We're a firm where, when you bring us in, there's very, very little that would have to go out to outside counsel because of the nature of our firm, as I've described, that we can handle pretty much everything, and we're quick to do that purposely on behalf of our school clients. So is it, quickly, is there anything...
To build on that, I mean, that would include litigation as well. We are panel counsel for CM Regent, some other insurance agencies and insurance brokers. I'm trying to think, Liberty Mutual, I believe, is another one.
So yeah, Liberty Mutual, CM Regent, Utica National, Right Risk Management, Excalibur. So that, and that's an excellent point, because if a litigation case arises, and we've been handling it up to that point, we then don't have to send it to outside counsel. We're on the panel list, and we can just continue uninterrupted in representing you.
It benefits the school district, because there's not that transitional period where the new insurance defense counsel would have to get up to speed with the case and expend time and resources. We can simply, you know, continue running with the ball, as we've been representing the district throughout the process.
That was a mouthful. So we're prepared to take any questions that you have on any specific issue?
Yeah, I have a question. So considering your knowledge of Beaver, Bridgewater, Vanport, Brighton Township, and Midland, how could you assure your efforts to protect the legal interest of our district, knowing our community?
Again, we have great familiarity with Beaver County because of our representation of Central Valley. Literally, it's right across the river, of course. So we know the court system here. We, as I mentioned with the cracker plant, have a lot of experience on the assessment front and being able to work with the courts and the judges in the courts in addressing matters. We've also, of course, handled a lot of student expulsion matters, grievance arbitrations, you know, so we have familiarity with those types of things. I would say, though, that one of the situations where potentially we couldn't handle, for example, a student expulsion matter, where we either have to choose whether to be the prosecutor or the counsel advising the board, we would have to look towards conflict counsel in that situation. That's more driven by the law and due process requirements as opposed to us not being able to do it. So in a situation like that, you know, we would work with the board in identifying counsel that you would be comfortable in coming in and being that conflict counsel. And again, it's not as though our firm couldn't do it, it's just that legally, we're not permitted to do it. So we would work with counsel that you would be comfortable with in bringing them into a situation like that. But again, I think, you know, and we've represented Central Valley since its inception. We were the ones who were solicitors of Center Area at the time of the merger with Manaca. Our firm is the one that shepherded, and that was the first voluntary merger in Pennsylvania's history. We worked through the issues of blending the two bargaining units from the two school districts together and dealing with a lot of other differences between the two districts in making that happen successfully. So that experience over there with Center Area and now Central Valley, I think, has really stood us in good terms, you know, with knowing the area and Beaver County.
I have a scenario question for you. Purely hypothetical. At last week's football game, two members of the football team, a drummer in the band and an assistant coach took a knee during the national end. The board and the superintendent are being urged to do something about this. What's your advice?
You're the partner. No, no, you don't have to. I'll supplement on what I need.
Obviously, you know, even if you look at it on a national basis, that's a free speech issue, and we have to be mindful of the freedom of speech rights that both students and staff would have. The difference with school districts and any public entity is, once you cross our doors, so to speak, there are permitted limitations on the exercise of your freedom of speech. So we would have to look to that kind of scenario, or quite frankly, any freedom of speech scenario. Students wearing armbands, you know, to demonstrate, wearing buttons. I know there was a landmark case, I think it was, I Love Boobies, you know, that...
Was that Bonkers for Jesus?
Yeah, Bonkers for Jesus was another one. So there's a standard that the Supreme Court has set, I believe it's the Tinker case, that you have to follow to see whether that freedom of speech right is interfering with the operations of the school district, or whether that's still a permitted right that they haven't left at the door. Freedom of speech in the United States is still a right that we all have. So we would have to look at the whole situation, the impact that it had.
Disruption.
The disruption.
Disruption to the school setting.
And then work with the board to develop a response, quite frankly, from a public relations standpoint as well, so that the public is aware of where you could act and where you're limited in acting because of the rights of the individuals that are involved. So I think that's the best answer I can get, give you, because I, sitting here, I wouldn't, I wouldn't say, you know, throw them off the team. It's one of those things where we would have to really work through the issues and see how it was impacting the district.
Thank you.
I want to take it a step further. I think you talked a little bit about it, though. I want to take it a step further and just say, we're now at a position where the board is going to do something. Like, we're doing something. Maybe a suspension.
In that scenario.
In this scenario, yes. So we're doing something, whether it's substantial, whether the crime fits the bill, whatever, whatever it is. We're coming to you and say, hey, this is what we're going to do. What's your response to us? Or guidance, or guidance?
The first thing, I want to roll that back, because with a sensitive issue like that, I would like to think that our office has been consulted, probably through the superintendent, you know, from the moment it happened, okay? So we would have been involved, we would have been giving options, providing legal guidance to the administration to then share with the board. But ultimately, our role as your solicitor would be to give you the options, and one of those options may be to impose some level of discipline, okay? So we would work with you to make sure that that discipline is going to stand up to attack, because if these individuals go to the ACLU, you know, and try to make a, no pun intended, federal case out of it, you want to be armed, you know, with the best possible defense that you have as to why that level of discipline was appropriate, both from a staff standpoint and a student standpoint. So I think number one is involve us, especially on a controversial matter, on the ground floor, let us provide guidance and options, and respecting the board's desire that discipline may be necessary. Look at that as a potential option in the range of discipline that might be appropriate and, quite frankly, be the most defensible. Now, let's say that I give you all those options, and you say, no, they're off the team. We, that's the decision the board wants to... Now, what's our job? Okay, as solicitors, it's to defend that action as best we're able to do, based on the information that we have, and give it the best possible likelihood of success if it's actually taken into court. So we're not going to abandon you because you didn't go with one of the other options that we felt would be better for the district from a legal standpoint. We're going to now look at the best way we can to defend that decision.
And to sort of build on that, our role as solicitors is not to influence your decision other than from a purely legal standpoint. Our, our position is, you're the elected officials. You know what is best for your district. You were elected by your constituents. Our position is to give you the law, not to tell you, you, based on our, our own philosophies, our own leanings, that we believe that this is the way to go. We do our best, and that's our position, to give you the legal options, tell you what you can do within the bounds of the law, and ultimately, you call the play, though.
In summary, we're not the tenth board member.
No.
Our job is to equip you to make decisions as, as Pete said, the elected officials. That's, that's how we view our role.
So in other words, if our superintendent called you and told you, you wouldn't say, well, what's your policy say? You, you would, you would give our legal advice, according to school law?
Policy may be a part of that, absolutely. We would want, that's probably one of the first places we would look, but absolutely, we would analyze it from all angles, that being one of them, to see what your, and how that policy is written, and how it comports to case law and statutory law, things of that nature.
But you would give our legal advice based on law?
Absolutely.
Yes. And one of the things I always warn clients, and we all tend to kind of default to adopting the PSBA recommended policies, you know, for the districts, and they do an excellent job with that. The danger, of course, of adopting policies is now you have a policy, but you're not following it, okay? Sometimes that's worse, because a good attorney is going to ask to see those policies, and they're going to walk through it, well, they didn't do this, they didn't do that. Now, when you go into court, that's even worse for you than not having a policy to begin with. So development of the policies are important, and that's one of your jobs, you know, as board members, is to develop policies that work in your district, okay? So when you say, you know, not just look at the, I mean, that's going to be one of the pieces, as Pete's saying, as it lines up with the law, and then providing options to administration and to the board based on that review. Here are your options, and this is what you can decide to do, and we can legally defend it.
When you are hired by a district, a school district, what work do you do? Do you do any proactive work with policies, or do you just look at them as cases come up?
Well...
I don't know if I've ever been asked to, to review a school district's entire policy handbook when we first came on.
It's quite extensive.
Sure.
Yes, it would be a very large undertaking.
In the old days, they were like that. Now, they're all electronic, but, you know, when you add it all up, it's still a lot.
I mean, if that is something that the board wished for us to do, absolutely, we could certainly handle that task. I cannot, in my experience, I have not been asked to do that.
Yeah, most I would say that we've been asked to do is when districts are using the PSBA service, and they receive the template policies from the PSBA, they'll ask us to do a review as they're receiving them to make sure that we're not seeing anything that might need to be adjusted based on our interactions with the district. So we have done that for several districts as they go through that process. But to come in and cold look at your policy manual, I don't know that you necessarily would want us to do that, quite frankly. I mean, that's, that's going to be an expense to you, to have us do that review.
I just wonder.
Yeah, one of the things, again, that we pride our firm, you know, and our reputation, is being proactive. So I don't want to make it sound like we would just react to a problem and review a policy because of the problem, but you have to decide what level of proactiveness you want us to be involved with. Quite frankly, there's so many, sometimes, things going on in a particular district, you know, and I always caution clients, you know, you may not want to have us do a policy review when we're handling two arbitration cases and one collective bargaining, you know, because the legal fees, you know, depending on your district, could be extensive. So you want to be wise about how and what you assign to our firm. And again, I'm presuming, working through the superintendent, kind of as the gatekeeper, so that we're not just racking up fees for you. And it's kind of unusual hearing that from an attorney, but I'm very sensitive to budgetary issues. I have sat on a school board, I've sat on a local council, I know what you guys go through, you know, and many times, I'll tell superintendents, board presidents, you know, are you sure you want? Last night, you had a council meeting, I looked at the council president, I said, you can write that letter, you don't want me, like, you don't want to pay me to write the letter that you can write. You know, so it's just being wise about those things from just so many years of experience, you know, that, you know, I don't want to see you just send everything to the solicitor's office and then get hit with the bill that you weren't expecting. I don't know if that kind of varied off of your question.
That's okay, thank you.
I have a question for you guys. Describe what you have done in the past that demonstrates your interest in better understanding your clients.
I should let the associate answer this question.
I could go off on a second here and tell you a story, but I hope this answers your question. And please tell me if it doesn't, but I, I come from a family of educators. My dad was a school board member, eastern side of the state, for twenty-five years. He was a director of the Career and Tech Center. And my, the first firm I actually worked at was, we represented his school. And it was kind of the one area of the law where he pretended to know more than he did, and we kind of got, you know, had a good connection on that. But I have a, I have a great respect for public education on the product of public school. I have a lot of respect for board members for the time you put into it and what you do for your communities and what you do for the kids. So I, when I approach school districts and municipalities, I, it sounds a little weird, but I come at it with a little bit of a passion, because of, you know, knowing what my dad did and knowing what he went through for all those years. So it's, it's not, to me, it's not just a, I like what I do. You know, I enjoy giving advice to school districts. I enjoy trying to, you know, help you guys do the best job you can. So I try and, I try and not insert myself into the fabric of the district, but I do try and see it as a little more of them than just showing up and, you know, giving some advice and going home. And I really try to invest myself in the success of my clients.
Let me just build on that a little bit. You come to two, maybe three, board meetings a month. We go to ten or twelve a month, okay? And what we hear going on in another district, if we're at your district and we say, you know what they were saying over there, fits right into the problem or the issue that you're struggling with, you know, we bring, we'll volunteer that... struggling with, you know, we bring, will volunteer that information, again, not to sway opinions, but just so that, you know, we're bringing more value to the table than maybe just being the legal counsel, just because of everything that we're hearing that other districts are struggling with. The other thing, you know, kind of like a little war story, in getting to know a district, I, and I think, speaking for both of us, I don't want to just say myself personally, when there's a serious disciplinary issue, let's say with a teacher, and let's say it involves sexual harassment, that the district is, is dealing with, we want to come alongside the district, again, to position the district for the best chance of success because of how sensitive that issue could be. And I remember a school district representing them on a grievance matter involving a teacher in sexual harassment, where, sitting at a table with you, I didn't have the full flavor of what was going on in the classroom, and I struggled with whether there was enough to terminate this teacher who was a seventeen-year veteran teacher with no issues in their personnel file, until I took the time to meet with and talk to each of the students, and they were seventh-grade girls, that were experiencing what this teacher was doing. And in taking that time and meeting with the administrator, the building administrators and the superintendent, it, it brought me to the point where I saw where they were coming as educators in what this teacher was doing. And ultimately, the decision, it was a board decision to terminate, and we fought that battle, and arbitrator actually said, yes, they committed sexual harassment, but put them back in the classroom, and we appealed that decision to the courts because that's one of the ways to get around a binding arbitration decision that violates public policy, which sexual harassment does, and successfully got the courts to sustain our termination. But it was, it started with me taking the time to, to understand where they were coming from as educators. So, and I think that's, again, a culture that we have at the firm, that we're, we're not just going to sit here at the board table with you, we're going to roll up our sleeves and almost become part of the culture of your district. Again, if you, if you talk to some of our references, I think that's the theme that you're going, one of the things you're going to get from them is that they almost view us as part of the school community, you know, part of the, part of you because of how much caring we bring to the table besides just our legal knowledge. I don't know if that answered the question, I hope it did.
Good, I appreciate it. Thanks, guys.
Any other questions?
Do you have any questions on the, on the fee proposal or anything? I know I didn't touch on that.
Thank you.
And I'd like to mention, we do have, this is one of the services, it doesn't cost you a dime. As one of our clients, we, after every election, update this manual that we provide to new board members, and we also, I know now, under the law, you go through training, classes, probably through the PSBA that sponsor those, we also provide in-service to new board members as well. So, that's just one of the other extra services that we provide.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.